Alright, firstly on the ten of this public hearing. And the first one is for the budget year, fiscal year 2019. So it'll be the budget year coming up. Anybody got anything to say about the budget? Or Amy?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Sack.
Riley, what's your...
The library really appreciates the help y'all are giving us. And we would like to thank them a couple of ways later. Well, thank you very much for that, and...
There were some fairly sizable increases in a couple of categories. I was just wondering what those pertained to? And what was that new money was being applied to? I started here since I just haven't opened up to it. Under expenditures for the SNA, it went from $55,000 to $87,000. I was wondering what the difference was in that. And on the same page, just above it, under city beautification, went from $72,000 to $106,000. One of y'all explain what those differences are?
19 SNA is the new roof.
Okay.
That's the difference there with that. Beautification, part of that is higher than last year. Yeah, to do the citywide landscaping. We did have several different rooms.
We actually decreased it down to $86,000. It's $86,000 now, if you want it to be as...
And that guy, whoever, I think it was 32, so what's actually going?
Y'all had Dewey Davidson in there. He's 32 on the services. But I don't believe that changed from the previous.
It did. We went up about $14,000 for... There's some things that they requested. One, there's something called a high near park, which is something that Mr. Simmons has been working on for a number of years. We put a little money in there for that. And I don't know if Ben McGee will speak to any other things in there. But let's see, Carter Avenue. It's got Carter Avenue, Creed, Purple on the River entrances, DNA tennis islands, which are, I think, in the parking lot islands, right?
And there's nothing in those right now.
Right. Street sands, DNA park sand, those kind of things. But anyway, we did increase it by about $14,000.
Okay. And under tourism and marketing, this copy I have says $161,000, up from $140,000. That was the 2018 budget. The forecast was $57,000. What was that difference?
One thing is, this year, it actually ended at like $153,000. But we're actually, we have to have money for two river fests this year. Because last year, the first part of last year's budget, and this year's budget are all in the same budget year because we switched the river fest back to one budget year. So we had to have some extra money in there for it.
Now, forgive me, this might not be the shortest option. I'm more... This time, I need you to email it over. I probably got this one on my phone last week.
I can just go through and tell you a few changes we made since the other night.
If you want mine.
The one is, in order to get a $15,000 grant, we needed help. I think Katie and Lady Amy have been working on some playground equipment for the Old Swinfield Community Center Park. And then also Alabama Street and maybe some down around Shateville. I'm not sure. But so we added, we added an extra $10,000 in there in order to get the grant. So that line out went up just a little bit. Since we met last week. We actually increased the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club, we added an extra $2,500 in there. And we added $20,000 more dollars to the library, to our Union County Library. So that increases that line out.
So the $20,000 on top of the $2,000 monthly, is that correct?
It is. It's, the new figure's $36,67. So we'll be giving them $44,000 in the year. And then the only thing, only other thing to change since the other night was we decreased city beautification by $20,000. And that's what we just discussed. Went back to our original number for programming at the SNA, which was $15,000. We increased Main Street by $2,000. But from last time, that actually decreased by $8,000. Got a couple items under tourism and marketing related to video and photography. We decreased that. Those two line items just a little bit. We took $2,500 out of the lot share. It was actually $5,000. We decreased that to $2,500. And we added $40,000 for, they wanted a comprehensive plan, which was actually for, I think we all sort of agreed that our plan in its own order is to be revamped and put in a little different format. It's more user-friendly.
So y'all get allocated $40,000 for that? That was one of my main reasons in looking at this. I've stated in the past in these meetings that I wasn't necessarily for a new plan. But it was, it was more because we had a plan in place. I thought that there was some good stuff in it that maybe could be implemented more before we changed it. Going to that meeting the other night, seeing the zoning things that they were proposing changing is something that, as a developer and as contractor, especially going into these older neighborhoods, trying to revitalize what there is. As you do run into a lot of roadblocks with our 1980 zoning regulations as far as lot size requirements and setback requirements and things of that nature that make it either a lengthy process to be able to do something or keep you from doing it at all. There's an inventory of, I believe it's 58 lots in the neighborhood here on North Side. And currently, with our zoning the way it is, out of those 58 vacant lots that are there that could have something done with, more than half of them have issues because of that zoning regulation. And so after, you know, going to that meeting the other night and seeing that, in my opinion, they do a better job of tackling those issues versus the old plan, I was of the opinion that it would be money well spent for y'all to at least do a phase of that and try and make the planning and zoning part of it high on the list. Because it is something that would make it much more easy for people like myself and others to go into these other areas and attempt some redevelopment. Y'all have done a tremendous job over the last eight years or so on the condemnations and cleaning up the city. But as part of cleaning it up, infill and revitalizing the areas that you're taking away from is a big part of it. And it being difficult currently to do that, it was going to be my statement in looking through the budget, looking for money, people applying in those places, that it would be a good idea to possibly take some money out of some of these areas and put towards that. But y'all, obviously...
If they care, that I hope. Alright, anybody got anything else? You got most of the giant, the fiscal year 2018, 19 budget. What I was saying, saying with Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, most carries. Alright, next is a public hearing for 615 Third Street. Joey, you doing that one?
You don't send anybody here for it.
Is anybody here concerned in 615 Third Street? Okay, go ahead, do it.
Well, we deem it's unsafe for human habitation. I've got pictures and letters we've sent out. And like to ask to proceed with demolition.
Who's owner? Mark's a man from the bottom.
Yep.
Is this the one that was supposed to be here? Who's the positive? The landowner's the positive one?
Okay. Better just article.
Since it was a deceased person, we have not been sure who the owner is today. Notice that I'm on the air, so the deceased person may be out of partisan interest.
Hello? I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Alright, we got Amy on speakerphone. She just got in. Her flat apparently, that happened not long ago, did it, Amy?
Five thirty on the night. I just got out of that apartment.
Okay. Alright, we've already started. And we were on a public hearing at 615 Third Street. And they're looking at the pictures now of the places. And they... Joey, Eric said Joey and Eric recommended condemnation of it, and demolition. So I think we all just got there looking at the pictures. So what's the wheel and pleasure of the vote? The most with Kevin Dale, the most with I was saying. So Amy, McKee. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, most carries. Alright, next one is public hearing for 1114 Rutherford. Would do it. Okay.
Let me back that up now. Just read two votes on this first one. First one is the DM. Second one is this position. And I must ask, am I correct, your warrant? Permission to remoteship that owner's estate, not so many third dates?
You want to meet your most of the votes? The DM at demolition?
Yeah.
Key, you gonna say something?
Yes.
Alright, everybody okay with it? Alright, 1114 Rutherford, you almost speak first?
Well, I know it's gone down. I used to live there. The last three years, I've been both officially and financially able to do things on the union hospital. I'm in the process of selling that or signing over. My two grandsons are both carpenters. The place is not level right now, but it could be made level. Because nothing's cheaper than where it's structured. Because they're both unable to be with us. We both know maybe we can all bring it together to empower it, get something over there. And basically, I'm not going to be allowed to do the place. They talked about either renovating the house or tearing it down or whatever.
Well, I think if it costs more than half of...
It costs more than 50% of the value. That's the lot that totally decodes.
Then you can't renovate it. But the value is what the tax assessors assess it is. So if it costs more than half of that...
I have no idea what it costs. I would be no idea. But I say, my grandson, they're both carpenters. One of them, well, one works a couple of times over. This father, y'all may know the Keith's friend? The local election? That's my son, I was just too sorry. And if you know him, you know that they're people that will say their thing.
What are you gonna, I think it, are they both, are they licensed?
Like? That's not... Okay. We can get them licensed.
They are, they are real carpenters, not like me and James Lee.
Yeah.
When I lived there, that community was a really nice community. Over a few more times, most of them died out. The most carpentry had the kids riding their bikes to drive down the street. After I lived there, we had a bunch of other jobs moving in. It's pretty underdog right now. And I did quite a bit of work on the house myself. I know it's got new gas lines in it because I had to fix it a while back.
When'd you move to it, Amy?
I moved about 15 years ago. And I've been moved out there about 10 years now.
Yeah, it used to be a very nice neighborhood. Funny, you grew up over there, didn't you? What you got, gentlemen?
I was looking at the property value, the state law, after time. Looks like it's around $15,000.
I talked to my grandson. They had made some arrangements. Somebody necessary to have a house torn down. Really, you have to do it.
Is that what y'all want to do, destroy it?
Well, it's going to be there. I might have to make that decision. I wonder if we're sitting in a vacuum for you. I would like to...
You probably need to get up with the building inspectors.
We'll talk.
Once you get it signed over to them and let them get an estimate on what it's going to cost. Let them tell them what they want to do. Y'all okay with them doing that. But it needs to be done. You know, it don't need to drag on.
Whose name is the land then?
Sir?
Whose name is the land?
It's my name right there.
Joseph, you're Joseph?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're not contesting or determining that it is a condemned property?
Well, I think it's fixable. It's not livable at this moment.
That's all there would be?
That don't mean it's not fixable. But they need to condemn it because it's not livable right now.
Oh, I can't say it's not livable. I can't disagree with that.
Yeah. So I think, is that what you're asking for tonight? It's always asking.
And we asked for one of the grandsons.
Okay, good.
But we don't have a plan. He didn't know what they were wanting to do.
Well, they're still trying to figure out how much money we got and what they can do.
And that's what we need. We need a plan.
How much time can you give me to do that?
Firstly, I'm getting most of the condition with that.
Well, I will do it all at once. If we're going to put the disposition aside, then I would say there's a part of motion. Let's continue to an acer. So I need, do you want me to one month, two months, three months?
Can you have something done by, or let us know or let them know by October, before the October meeting? Could you be a month?
You're the first November. Surely they make up their minds. They can get all this done.
So that's up to the vote. Are you good with that, Joe?
We just want a resolution to follow what he...
We don't have no problem.
Yeah.
So we don't have to notice again. I would ask for motion to adjudicate the property as condemned and set to continue the disposition until November 6.
Got most of the guy outside? Saying McKee, any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll leave it to November, first November.
That time, look surely out of plan.
Okay.
As possible, I would, you know, something for the person over there.
Yeah. Well, give, let them have your plan and...
Yeah, just contact me if there is.
Okay. Do you need a plan, a variety, or just a market?
We'll need some bids if you want to get somebody to refinance. You can call us if you want. Maybe we can talk about it, figure out what we need.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate your time.
Sure. Thank y'all. Yeah, there's a elevator right there if y'all brother used. It would be a lot easier. Okay. The last item on the public hearing is a public hearing closing campus. Ray, you tell, yes, sir.
Couple of things. Where you're going to close the street is above both entrances to the library parking lot? Is that correct?
The proposed place chanter just to make it is just south of library parking lot entrance. Both entrances, I believe. Is that correct, both entrances?
The southernmost entrance.
Will be open.
Will be open.
So we'll close one entrance, but the one will be open. Okay.
What other entrance are you referring?
Well, I believe it's right...
Southern or northern?
I believe it's southern. Am I not correct? There's the northern that will...
Northern it'll be open.
Southern will be the one closed.
Southern's, the southern's one.
The southern goes into the administration building.
Yeah.
School administration building.
No, they're two centers.
All of the library parking will be open.
Okay.
The driveway into the school administration building will be closed.
So just...
Both entrances will be open.
I thought that would let us be sure.
Follow the trail.
Okay. Also, you know, if closing the street will have an effect on libraries and rents, wouldn't have to change addresses with the post officer, 911?
I wouldn't think so. We're closing past the library.
King Street's still there.
Yeah, still going to be King Street up to the second entrance.
Yeah, it's 219 right now, 219 King Street.
I'd say, I'd say probably stay the same. Any other questions? No, I don't need to. Most of the clothes.
How are the administration? How are they going to access their building?
They come from Carter's side.
They've already done?
No, we're going to tear out their sidewalk. Sidewalk currently separating those parking lots.
Okay.
But they've already agreed. Yeah. But I've had with the administrative, we're going to tear that sidewalk out for the drive and tie the two parking lots together.
So do you approve the closing? I want to make sure you understand it. First of all, you have to adjudicate that the street's no longer necessary for public use or the bid.
And mom, but then you look at the water traffic. So long, we don't have to worry about traffic.
All the benefit to do that. Once you do that, it's permanent. We go along our own street. This man, the street will go to the surrounding landowners. So that's what you would be going to do. The only other thing is, I haven't heard back from the school system about way to be compensation. But I'm pretty sure they're going to, this superintendent if it would, well, that's the condition if I'm going to do that.
We're on the other side. How far will it be? Just around the other side of the trail will be closed. I guess there'll be some kind of barricade.
We'll put up some bollards there to keep cars coming across the trail. And we'll actually tie the old, what you're abandoning, we'll tie that into the restroom, to the welcome center. And that can be their access off the trail into the welcome center.
Now, the most, I'm good with that. Some of them, most of McKee's, I was saying. Say my will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Okay, most carries. Okay, let's move to the departmental business. Fly gas and water, please, you here.
Sir, there's more. We've got a supply of gas system to get started. We think we've gotten everything worked out with the Public Service Commission, our gas expansion project that's booked in Marshall County, Union County. We are having to pretty much redo everything that we have done about this time last year. So we can't just start tomorrow. But anyway, we are trying to get everything back up and going on the project. It's still a very safe project. We talked about last year, nothing's changed. It's just a year older. One of the things we need to do on the bonds, we're going to the general obligation bond versus a revenue bond. And lots of, as we got into it, there were a lot of reasons for us to make the change. I think we may have had some, we have talked to y'all about that a little bit. Some, there's documents that we need to get changed. We need to get some approved, General Ryan Reagan. Or Frankie, I think he picked up something this morning. Brad, they have six of them this morning.
She's supposed to email me as a reference today.
Okay.
This was a resolution.
This was a resolution of the 10. What was the amount if it's that, ask the commission for?
I think it's up to three million. We were originally 3.3 last year. This is a general obligation bond. We don't have, you have, with revenue bonds, you have to have some contingency accounts for that, for terms. So anyway, the amount's able to come down. The amount of the way far is going to come down.
Yeah, there's less upper costs. There's also, it also will be more like... What have you? But in order for us to move quickly, need to get it going. Otherwise, it's not a 90-day process. No urgency to that, other than PSC really wants to get it over.
So you need a most, you need a permission to check this resolution?
Yeah, this resolution just gets the, they've got to do a lot of work to get the bond ready. Now, I'm sitting there before they sell, we'll talk again about that. But this is just to get the ball rolling, to get all their documents in order. Is that right?
Start the process for just as you may. It don't have to be...
We got to do it all over again?
You don't have to run into any of those papers. So it's just standing our intent. If you want, at this point, you're not approving the actual issue.
I've got most of the guy that's saying with Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? The most carries.
I'll also say one. We already had contractor. We were, y'all had voted to award to be whatever, to sign the contract with it because if we saw some delays coming. Lady Amy wants us to redid the contract because it's been over a year. And I think that's a good idea. So we've got all the documents ready. We want y'all to, I guess, authorize us to re-advertise for bidders for the project.
Maybe that'll go down, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I read most of the advertising fees. My Kevin Dale, I was saying. Say my key. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? The most carries.
We're last gas department. I, we have an open there. We'll hire Hunter Chisholm for that open. He's worked with us through the summer. Actually, over the winter, for some summer help. He worked a little more time in the gas department. I think he can do fine in that role, just with gas department.
I understand. Kevin Dale, most of the most we've got a second. Say my will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Most carries.
And lastly, Mayor, we've got our budgets. I guess I think you'd be ready to be red or there's nothing else. That's over there. Again, our budgets pretty much just follow what y'all do with raises. You know, we don't have any projects in there. We have the gas projects in there that we talked about. Electric, water, wastewater. You know, just, I put money in there for capital projects, but we just don't know what's going to, you know, what's going to break. We don't have any major improvement projects. Any, if there is some money, again, in water and electric and capital improvement. So again, if we do, you know, come across things and hear it needs to be fixed or upgraded, especially on the water system. You know, we identify some of the old remains and get the money that's there in existing budgets, we try to work those in. There are a couple of projects on the electric side. And again, if we flesh that out a little bit into a year, I may come back and see one of, actually do one of those projects. There's some money, money here if we have to take some changes and get some out of there, we can do that as well. But this budget is pretty much just keeping the lights on. Keep everything going. Get on the gas side of it. That Marshall County, 50 dollars in there for water, wastewater, and electric budgets are pretty much just standard.
Yes, sure. They're going.
I believe most approved, if I guess, or if... Most of the will I was setting. So Kevin Dale, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Most carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Community development.
I mailed my report to you guys over this morning. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. And nothing else for the board.
Alright, good deal. Police department, Chris, you got anything?
Mr. May don't have anything, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Fire department, Steve.
We don't have anything here.
You got a police, I'm looking over there for you.
I'm gonna mix things up everybody.
All right, let's move to building inspectors owning. I know we're gonna email the month report, anybody got any questions on this? Start with it. Then you can take the rest of it, George.
All right, so, they said you should have all the reports sent to you already. Uh, according to the zoning meeting from last week, we had a request from First Baptist Church about replacing the damaged freestanding sign. And the zoning board approved, allowed him. To replace the freestanding sign in season. So zoning board approved. Just bad or whatever. Um, we also had a request from Brandon Mason to build cul-de-sac. Uh, he had problems with the weaker requirements on five street. Causes the narrowness of the street. A new street's supposed to be a certain distance long and certain width, but, you know, it seems unfair to make him redo the entire street because the street doesn't need it. So they allowed him to proceed with it if he would agree to put in a fire hydrant within five hundred feet. He agreed to, but it had a problem with that, so they approved.
Orders, orders to allow variances. Good? That one will require a lot of-
Oh, will it?
Yeah.
We think that even though the zoning board gives a variance, we still have to approve it. We used to.
I don't know the answer to that because it's in the street thing and I'm not that familiar with it. So, uh, you wanna say, let's just be safe and do it, but I'll, I'll get an answer.
You'll back up the sign?
I don't really think you have to, well, I suspect if they've approved it, but different variances are, say, in different ways.
I was back up the sign at First Baptist. And most, my wheel's safe, my John, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That most carries. All right, five street cul-de-sac, Brandon Mason. So, you know, most of my key, I was saying. Right. Take my John, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most carries. All right, move down here, number four, where they-
Well, actually number first. Uh, continue the speakers, please. Re-zoning for purposes of building property into a cemetery on the eight hundred block of Forest High Street. So we need to set a hearing next month. We'll have to post it in paper, the signs out, from R two to an eight.
I've got most of Kevin Dale, that'll be here in the hell of a second. Take my John, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That most carries. So we'll move the next three together.
So we also have a few other condemned properties we're asking to set for a public hearing. Uh, five oh seven Clark. Uh, nine oh three South Hilldale. And nine oh two Sun Severn.
Passed for October second.
October second?
Public hearing. October second for those three. That most of Kevin Dale, I was saying. Take my wheel, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill, it tells for a year.
I think I'll be-
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move to general city duties. Adam A is approval for protection of planes docked, all this stuff. They think, you know, most of my John, I was saying. Take my key, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, approval for July sixteenth minutes. Most of Kevin Dale, I was saying. Take my wheel. Any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That most carries. Adam C is to approve August seventh minutes. Most of my keys are up safe, take my Kevin Dale, or Amy, one of her second. Key? Key, take me second. Any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most carries. Adam D is to set the set's day waiting for two thousand eighteen nineteen. That's all we're talking about. He, he know- Well, uh, Frankie may have to tell you, but basically it's the assist evaluation of the property.
Okay.
Yeah. It went up some. So we, but we had to, for mouth, they'll accept it. So I need to move to accept, y'all do. Most of my John, I was saying. Take my wheel. Any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Adam A is to accept tax levy for twenty eighteen nineteen. Most of my Kevin Dale, I was saying. Open charge. A tax. Yeah, we gotta do it tonight. There was a visit when the, whether it went up or down, we gotta prove. Second. Take my boat. Key, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just interrupt for a second, we'll go ahead and answer the question with the last thing that y'all found out the answer. Uh, the sign on various is, the zoning board can do those on the sign. The street, we have to, this one has to do.
We covered all the bases anyway, didn't we?
Yeah.
On rezoning? No, that's just giving a variance on the street.
I know, but if it were like a rezoning, they, they can. I agree with that, I don't think they can prove that, no. Make sure the-
Okay.
She's at-
We did move here, you were-
Yeah, we had to talk.
Okay.
Let me just put it, essentially, we're unclear. Um, if we voted not to increase the taxes, then we should vote against approving the tax levy, is that correct?
Yes, I suppose so.
It doesn't really matter.
Stay on the record, if you like, you can have to pass the record, state your reason.
Yeah, let's have some. I just had a question, thank you.
Okay, Adam A is approved request for cash for number three for Coca-Cola Drive Project is thirty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars. So, most of my wheel's safe, my John, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor? Any, any opposed? That most carries. And then, y'all remember last time, this is appro- uh, approved payment request number two. Yeah, we requested the cash last meeting. So now we need to prove their payment for this.
Okay.
So, most of my keys, second with John. Any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam A is a police officer, oath of office. Who puts that on there? You?
How did you put that there?
Oh, just the same one we've been using.
Is that the clerk or the police officers? Probably pretty much just like, like the code that did the statute of deals with the bars.
About like-
I'm not familiar with that, I'm familiar with the, with the law department.
Commisional standard of the office. I guess they have to do that when they take office, or become a police officer.
Well, in this, unlike Sheriff's Department, the board has to give authority to the police department and the police officers.
The minister, though.
Yeah, commi- their commission, their police powers come from the commission of the board.
All right, I need most of them to prove this oath, I guess, what I'm saying. Most of my John, I have a second.
I second.
Wheel?
Any other questions? That have to be done every year or just, does everyone have to do that?
Be honest with you, I, I don't know, something has come up before.
Yeah, I think-
I don't know how long, how long ago it's been. Normally when the off, when you approve the office to be hired, I don't know, that's kind of, you're giving that employee-
It hasn't in the past every year.
No.
So I would say once or for that. That's where's me. Steve lives. Or whoever, back in June. Or suit scientist.
Can't, I don't know, you might have authority to do that, I'm not-
Yeah, I do, good.
So it's just for this one police officer?
Not sure, I don't know.
That was just an example of what is, they all say, it'll be for every officer. It's just a basic. I swear, it was most of folks.
We've been doing this, every officer.
I, well, I can only remember it coming up one other time, that I can remember.
Yeah, that was, I mean, he's been on the court, but it's likely just happened, so I don't know.
I, who is? Now, he's been in court.
Well, she is pulling that one, because that was an example.
Where does it approve in the, I'll prove specifically.
No, 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 just that, I was just, I mean, why we got-
It's just what you use.
Was it changed? Oh. Has been over minutes, we're putting, basically, no. All right, any, did we get a motion? That we voted? All right, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yeah, that's what everybody thinks, really. Highway thirty, starting traffic last update, have none except, since I did, kinda emailed a rough drawing and what they, basically it was to align those two streets. But I think what it's gonna happen for, where the money start with. The main thing, which they don't have. That's all on it, they, I got, they have got a rough concept of how they like to do this, except for money that comes available. And the main thing was aligning the two streets, you know, it kinda all says the plan, has to go out and count. But that was the main thing.
Hey, Jim, I wanna make one comment.
Okay.
The other night at the conference planning meeting, when Bob Harper mentioned one benefit of the plan, if we have some kind of vision drawn, or we know what we want, MDOT is more likely, I mean, that's what he said, I don't know if I'm sure, but it's more likely to help, you know, to kind of know what we're wanting and what we're doing. And, and he said that, y'all could, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking, right? So, you know, give us funding, if we can do what it's actually, hopefully it's not something that's trying to draw it out, right?
They are, they're drawing it out, actually, uh, and, you know, they're gonna, when they do decide which plan they would like to go with, they're gonna send it to us, let us look at it. But they're the ones, MDOT's the one, they have about six engineers up here that say they can. So they are aware, I would probably guide, that they're supposed to be drawing out some plans to send to us to look at.
From highway one seventy-eight, going up to the hospital, all the way out to Watch for Drive.
Okay, any other questions? All right. I got nothing on Snyder River, no bridge, anything? All right, let's go with the zoning board members. I think they, you got two requests, thing? Or you got both of them?
Or can you get off the air earlier? I didn't realize, you know, a couple days, we were making a date, that one of them that replaced it, Brett Robb, between that and all of this.
Oh, well-
Has to be replaced, that's what I'm aware of, that people gonna do the same way it was. Or if you're not, we're going to take it, she had taken it. Send air, and then I, then we're gonna get the gas table.
Oh, did you?
Wait, call me. I don't think, they mostly go near. He mentioned that to me, and he's-
Okay, well, it's safe, uh, till next week. But he wasn't clear about it, he was asking, I said, that's now, policy's had four.
Also, Rick, I went ahead and appointed two promoters, I think we had two from fourth career, or four, remember? And we had multiple people from different boards, so we had said last meeting that it wouldn't matter if they came from the second one. But I'm totally fine with waiting, but I do wanna go ahead and appoint one promoter.
All right, which one you want to appoint?
Mark McClinton.
All right, you gonna make that formal motion?
Yeah.
Now I got a motion to appoint Mark McClinton to the zoning board, do I have a second? Second, taken by Keith. Any other questions, or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That most carries. All right, we got one closer. All right, let's go to Adam A is British Petroleum Overlay Funds, and I asked Brett to, uh, call and get the, basically I called Jackie to how we get her money. They, they told me the process, so I called him, basically told him we would call in the Department of Finance, and he can explain how we go about getting this, uh, except five hundred thousand for overlay of streets. So we're-
No, just three, no, it's like-
Just three overlay.
Okay. Um, the way we understand it's gonna work is, Department of Finance is basically gonna hand over the money to the city. And then the city will have to give quarterly reports on how they spent the money, what for, who it went to, such as that. So what we've got is, we don't have it in hand yet, but their Department of Finance is gonna load an MOU onto their website. The team will have to go on their website, fill out the city information, agree to only spend the money on what it was approved for, agree to do the quarterly report, and electronic signature, submit it back. Um, so that's, that's what the agenda item is, give the team permission to do that. Uh, the way we understand it, they only have fifty-two million dollars in the bank. And it's gonna be kind of first come, first served. The, uh, the rest of the seven hundred million will come from bonds that are sold in November. It's probably December, January, before that money, they use. But hopefully if they download it tomorrow, we can get them signed up, we'll be one first in line to get the money, which is, hopefully, do the project before winter.
I need, I did tell it, uh, Park Plaza would be one, one that we want to do with that though. Y'all agreeing with that, and thought it's the longest stretch we can have, worse, since Southern Traffic. I don't think five, I don't think five, I don't think five hundred thousand would get it.
I don't think we could use it for that, the way it was termed in the bill, it was overlay money for streets.
It wouldn't be a good idea.
We'll make some prep, we'll get out some spots.
Oh, yeah, so, it's all, gets worked every week. So I guess what, I need permission to sign the MOU once it comes out, maybe hopefully tomorrow.
They need both to like sign the MOU, and then we'd like to get a motion to allow us to advertise once we get plans done, because we'll have done, hopefully, gotta have done for the next board meeting, we won't, we won't make the deadline for asphalt plants to shut down in November.
So we need to, uh, do one to turn it, yes. I've got a motion with Keith for them, MOU, second with Kevin Dale. Any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to advertise for bids, once they get the specs, I don't know. Got most of my John, I was saying. Take my wheel, any other questions, nurse discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then probably what we need to do, uh, Nick, make sure if I'm wrong, is decide what of the streets we want.
I think Park Plaza, I'll probably take half of it, I think that'll probably be about two hundred and fifty thousand. We'll have another two hundred or so.
Cause we're thinking about a hundred and forty-five.
Well, you gotta have engineer plans, and then, uh, that's what takes our open.
Did you take more than one point five?
Well, I'm on a hundred and forty-five, I'll be for those. Well, 125, people are told it's 125 mile open, they didn't move that thing.
About 100 dollars. We just did some rough numbers, you know, plenty, plenty of tons of stuff to be, and put some local money in there to dig out.
When you deal with that, you got to have.
Then you got to re-stripe it.
Yeah. And then you got to have plans to put it out in space for maintenance.
We got several streets under the list, I'm assuming we've been calling them.
Well, well, I mean, obviously we're not going to get through them all with this. But let's just be thinking what's the next one in line, because I think most of the sign MOU, we can start rolling the specs for the other street, right? Just be thinking about it, maybe by next week, what's the sign, which one should be next? Anyway, of course, we're going to overlay some more home. But anyway, for this money. Okay.
So we can't use it without having a plane?
You got to go to the public bid law, secure advertising, take. So you got to have plans and then something after all the specs.
Just may I ask a question? This, this BP money, does this have to do with some of the, a number of years ago?
I'd like to go, cause it's got, George, you have one of them staying. They got others. They still work.
They got item A away, they can go. He might got anything else?
Is that? I, I got a couple things.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think, I don't, was a woman that was on, inside the identification. And one of the things that we talked about today is that there's a grant for the arch. You specifically have to use it for, or I think originally, here it was planned, we were going to do something on Bankhead, maybe. And then that would be the state. But any, anyway, we spent some of that money obviously here and then they're going to put lettering on that. You all need to take a foot trail, you all need to city take a foot trail, back with signs. So there's, there's a, a bid or proposal to do it. And what I'm asking is, do we have to approve, I mean, because it's a grant, do we have to approve it as a?
I think so. We need to prove, spin it up through, well, if it takes those.
Yes, $15,000.
Letter that's background.
Right.
That's the lowest bid we put that.
That's the lowest bid and there were three, three bids tall?
Even though we're not spending money, we're still going to have to prove it. Even though it's the money. Yeah, we still have to see the 9,000.
So there's a couple of things here, but I think that, I want to make a motion that we approve for 15, 50,000. We got money for that.
And I want you to keep that, I have a second. Thank my Kevin Dale, any other questions, all in favor? Any vote? Okay.
All right, and then the second thing is there's, I didn't know what Christmas swag was, but. Anyway, we, that also, we were going to use to do Bankhead and now what? The beautification committee is looking is on Carter Avenue, putting an arch, arch on that. And with the Christmas swag, and also it was proposed that, you know, not during Christmas, maybe cooking other events, if we're having an event there. But the mayor, Mr. Maddox, and I think a couple more people, they have room at a place to put it. And it's right there at the end of the library, parking lot, kind of right there at Screen Co., right there to put that. Because Carter is obviously a big influence for our city. And so we put that there, obviously during the holidays, it would have the Christmas swag on it. And then other times we would use it to announce things that we were having, something like that.
Plenty similar to this. It won't be an arch, it'd be two big poles.
Okay.
Bet you can help me out here, it's huge pole. You read we got that, we already had them ordered and then MDOT came up. They gave us permission to deliver, we was wanting to dig up somewhat here on this corner and over there by Man Atkins. It was just going to be, didn't look, just wanted to dig up.
The bases of the poles are, are significant. The islam metal poles, they're, they're, they're good looking poles, they're very expensive to buy. We've got the bases and everything forward, just kind of waiting on the spot. Again, with the, this is an attractive spot, come to city, I would put that through there, so I'm worried that it kind of ride.
So it won't be an arch, but it'll be two big poles.
Yeah, two poles. Want to put like a banner.
The Christmas swag, it's got lights and, I don't know, what, you remember what I've got?
It's, it's bright.
Yeah. It's got lights and stars and whatever goes along with Christmas.
Snowflakes.
Snowflakes.
It's like a vintagey looking. It matches, the snowflakes are on the streets now.
So that'll be put up for the Christmas season, but after that, we thought it'd be good to have it for advertising, being for it. That's most, big birthday. Yeah, they did with that.
Yeah, it was rare and it was part of the building.
It was.
The only thing I'm just kidding, this is probably not part of the motion, but somebody needs to control what goes. We get people asking us, they all kind of stuff up there, so probably somebody to decide what that was up there to bring to the song.
Bill and Jane could decide that, it don't, don't hurt.
Well, I mean, I think that obviously Bill and Jane would be a part of it, but I think they're going to be one of the committees, that somebody in that. But I agree with that, definitely.
We'll have, we'll have our kind of requests.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm assuming there's not going to be a height issue with this banner down through there, clearance issue, is it?
It's not taking fire throws around somewhere. No, it'll be taller, we looked at, they'll be taller.
Yeah, there's service lines crossing, there's many service lines. It'll be taller.
I assume it probably would be, but this.
You know what happens when you're singing?
Yeah. Well, you got, you got, you got truck traffic that's down through there.
Well, we did, we addressed that, it's absolutely, so I think we'll do.
But I, I mean, I don't even know, believe.
I think that's just information, unless y'all want.
I'm just telling you about that, I don't know.
Because we're not spending, we already got the poles and the swag, so we don't spend any money other than.
We did put a couple white flags out, if you want to go by and see where we're talking about, you like, he said, where it's right, Queen Screen Co., city parking lot, it directly across the street, it's kind of a track in the pavement, sort of behind the thing. We get over there, you'll see what I'm talking about, you can see where the flag.
And another thing, just for a couple of knowledge, that, that brand that we have, we're all talking about over here, that ends. We need to spend that money by the 20, about 20, 20, 20. March of 2020, so if that specifically has to have an arch.
It ain't got to have a arch, it's got to have something to do with advertising, city, you know, you're entering. We wanted arch, but man, they.
Bottom line is, we're still going to have.
It must got to be somewhere on.
It does have to be on Bankhead.
I guess we could put it on, I think, go on to Bank Street. Where you turn to go.
I can't really specifics, I would think it's on, so, to the intersection there.
Yeah.
By 30.
15 to 30.
Yeah, Bankhead, it's kind of like, landscaping, beautification, in that area.
So, but does it have to, you said it can be used for landscaping and beautification?
Well, it ain't, it can't be an arch, obviously, because they won't prove.
Right.
But it can be, I think, those are friends, they got a tower, it is up there.
But it says it has to be, I mean.
It'll be a long Bankhead.
Anything beautification wise, it doesn't have to be advertising.
Science, science.
Yeah, signage. There's got to be a long Bankhead.
What about directional lines on?
I think. We'll have to look and make sure, but I think that probably.
This is just.
Yeah. This is just, it's money that the state just kind of gave us a couple of years.
No, we're going to, we're going to have money left for that, that we need to probably, if they come out.
Well, we have 69, that's up to 5,000. How much is that? 50,000.
4,000. Thank you.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Well, we need that famous motion. If not, Kevin Dale, it's 10 seconds to the jury. All in favor? Go on.